Welcome to the March 25th meeting of the American Board of Education. It is six o'clock and the meeting is now called Order. Glad to see you all here and thank you for all these wonderful treats. It's how long it was walking around and seeing all this fun stuff. Thank you. We greatly appreciate all the, well, a lot of you trying to organize. So I'm going to compare this before me with all these sweet treats right here. But we'll try. We'll go ahead and begin now with our superintendent's report.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Wanted to start by saying I had the privilege of attending our middle school soccer championship last night where our Russell Middle girls won the championship in their first year. Congratulations to the dog pack in this wages. And our Hayman Morris boys came and runner up for the boys championship. So not a bad showing for our school system in our first year of middle school soccer. So really proud of the work that our staff and coaches have done to support our kids in that regard. As you mentioned Chair, it is school board appreciation month. So that's why all the gifts are here to show you all how much our community appreciates you. I know as the superintendent it has been my privilege to serve with this board for the last several months where you have attended several different trainings. You're working on developing a budget right now. And there's just a lot of work to do and it makes me proud that you guys are so committed to joining us in our work and our school system and you care so deeply about our kids and our teachers. So on behalf of all of our staff and our community, I just want to say as a superintendent, thank you to our school board for your tireless work on behalf of our children. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Lundy. We will move on with our presentations and discussions and start with Support Services, Dr. Bowen.
Good evening. Support Services for March 25th work session contains three information items and one action item. Dr. Lowe will now come forward as the first two information items are related to student services. Dr. Lowe.
Thank you. Yes, I have two information items for you tonight. The first one is to review a new partnership with you regarding the Cook Center for Human Connection. So the Cook Center is an organization that specializes in providing parents and guardians access to various types of support for common mental health challenges students may be going through. So we're really excited to work with them to offer three tiers of support for families. While one of the tiers will begin immediately, we are looking at a May 1st implementation date for the other two services. The purpose of waiting is so that we can facilitate an impact meeting with the Cook Center and other stakeholders to discuss implementation, the types of data that we want to collect from them, and then the way that we can increase parent engagement throughout the year. So if we can go to the next slide, Michelle. So once everything is in place with them, families will have free access to three different types of services for their student. So the first tier of support is parentguidance.org and it would be appropriate for all of our families to use. The second tier of support is the Mental Health Series and it would benefit families interested in learning more about the most difficult parenting challenges. And then the third tier would be parent coaching for families most in need with private coaching available to them. So to go a little bit more in detail there, so parentguidance.org, that's the tier one option, is a library of on-demand videos recorded by licensed therapists on a variety of topics and so families can get answers to common questions regarding mental health for their students. So the on-demand library offers 72 videos in the library and they're on topics such as anxiety and depression, behavior issues, bullying, grief and loss, suicide prevention, things of that nature. Okay? So that option should be embedded sometime on our website this week for parents to go ahead and start accessing as soon as possible. The second tier, if we can go to the next one, is the Mental Health Series and these are live events, virtual events that parents can sign up for to learn from licensed therapists and have an opportunity to ask questions during the session. So there's over 384 facilitated sessions annually, over eight Spanish-speaking sessions monthly, and then one Ask a Therapist Live so they can get on and ask a bunch of questions to a therapist once a month. Parents will have unlimited access to this and they can sign up for as many sessions as they would like to each month. Right? And then the next one is the parent coaching. These are private one-on-one coaching sessions with a cognitive behavior coach. They'll have access to a messaging platform, everything's hypo-protected and it's available in English and Spanish. And so this is great for families who maybe don't have insurance or they're on a wait list for therapy, or maybe they just can't get to a therapist after work hours. So they'll build a customized roadmap for each family based on their specific needs. So the following, the last slides, the following through slides are just examples of the type of data we would receive. So the first one, this would be the number of registrations each month for the Mental Health Series, that's that tier two live session, so we can see how many families are actually engaging in that. And then the next one would be how many families register and attend the on-demand options. And then the last one, we would be able to see what the most viewed topics are that families are registering for. So while that on-demand video is free, the cost of the Mental Health Series and parent coaching is $65,000, but it's going to be covered by Project Aware. So just as a reminder, Project Aware is a grant that we received to bolster and sustain the infrastructure of our mental health services here in the county. Do you have any questions about this for parents?
The reason why we have their school systems or districts who have implemented this?
Here in Georgia, Oglethorpe County is currently doing it. And then we also, another sizable district compared to us is out of state and that would be in Columbia, South Carolina.
Is it simply being like favorable? Are they seeing some positive results from it?
Yes, they are. They're seeing a lot of parents attend, like they went over the data in Oglethorpe and they were shocked by the amount of parents who were attending the sessions.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. The next one is Monique Burr Foundation and this is a curriculum for personal safety and human trafficking. So we have two laws here in Georgia, Aaron's Law and the Human Trafficking Law. And the curriculum I'm bringing before you tonight satisfies both of these mandates. So as you can see, Aaron's Law applies to kindergarten through ninth grade and it focuses on sexual abuse and assault and prevention. And then the Human Trafficking Laws for students sixth through 12th grade and our staff must provide instruction on human trafficking to students in those grade bands every year. So every student, every year. So the state of Georgia, it's really great. They release a technical assistance guide to help school systems select appropriate materials and programs to satisfy this law or the two laws. And so you can see a screen capture here of the guide. We had two work groups review these programs to determine which would be the best for our students. We really wanted a program that was vertically aligned, so that means K through 12, that was developmentally appropriate and satisfied both of the mandates in one package. So both work groups selected Monique Burr Foundation to satisfy those mandates. And you can see here on the last screen, this is a snapshot of the curriculum. It shows the compliance with Georgia mandates along with information such as like the format, the languages parents will get materials in, and then the cost. So the cost for us, the estimate we received was $14,150 for all schools and to train our facilitators. So that's it for me. Do you all have any questions about this curriculum?
Where did you say this is coming out of, the funding?
This would come out of the Student Services budget.
Student Services, okay.
On this curriculum, is it touches on a touchy subject for kindergarten through eighth grade, ninth grade, and then all the way through 12? Is there an option for parents to opt out just like there is for any curriculum such as this?
Absolutely, yes.
And is there a way for parents to review the curriculum prior to the school teaching it?
They would probably need to come up to the school to do that since it'll be a password-protected account, but we could open that up for them to look at.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you, Dr. Lowe. For our third information item, I wanted to share that we are currently piloting the School Dog Safety App. For clarification, the dog in School Dog is not spelled D-A-W-G unfortunately, and it only contains one G. However, we're still excited to be introducing this tool in four of our schools and one of our programs, their C-FIT facility. The four schools are Winder Elementary, Russell Middle, Wynderboro High School, and Appalachia High School. The School Dog App will primarily be used by SROs, building level admin, and district leaders to enter safety data based on either single observations or multiple observations in conducting what is called a School Dog Walk. Categories include, but are not limited to, building access, accident injury prevention, badges identification, climate culture, energy, utility usage, cleanliness, surveillance, and security. The app has a feature allowing pictures to be taken and uploaded by the observer. We have the ability to run reports by location or by the whole district to identify our many, many strengths, but also to identify any areas needing more attention or training. So far, we have had 76 entries at five locations in less than a week. So we look forward to coming back in the future with some reports to show how we're doing there in the future. Are there any questions or comments on the School Dog App from the board?
I just have one question, Dr. Bowen. Because you listed the areas and the components of those, you know, the screening or what have you. How long does, in general, does it take an SRO or even an admin person to complete that rounding per se?
One entry is 12 seconds. I did a walk yesterday with 10 entries and it took me about 40 minutes to get all the way around the building and look for all the different categories. What we hope to do is the people that are regularly in that building and doing walks all day long, they can just do some very quick entries. And, you know, there's 12 different categories, 12 or more different categories. We hope to focus in on two or three. Classroom door security, exterior door security, building access, also badge and identification from staff and visitors. We're things that we were looking to focus on rather than trying to see everything. We want to have some focus there.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the last item, which is an action item. We have the school year 25-26 Student Code of Conduct. Each year, we ask our school governance teams to review our existing code of conduct at their January and February monthly meetings. Recommendations from the SGTs are reviewed, considered by district leaders, and potentially cluster and district governance teams. District leaders also pay close attention to any pertinent legislation that may require code of conduct changes. And any changes that we would have would generally be reviewed by our district legal representatives and then brought to the board for discussion and approval. Currently, we don't have any changes to recommend to you from last year's code of conduct. We would like tonight for the action item to be, the superintendent recommends placing the school year 26 proposed code of conduct on the table for review for the next month until the next work session. Gives us time for the legislative session to end, get any results there that may be incorporated in, also for public review. We'd like this out there on our website with the option for public review turned on. And then we'll review those and come back to you at the end of next month, decide if there are any changes, and recommend for consent agenda approval, potentially at the May board meeting. That sounds okay? That's what we'd like to recommend tonight.
Sound good? You have to consent?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bowen.
Thank you all.
All right. Ms. Houston, Business Services.
All right. I have two action items tonight. The first one is the teacher retirement system of Georgia receives an audit every year and part of that audit is testing school sites. We were one of the 12 sites that were chosen to be tested for fiscal year 2024. Malden and Jenkins is our auditor and they provide this service for $15,000. We are asking the board to increase the amount. We are going to pay Malden and Jenkins in fiscal year 2025 to $70,000, which is the $75,000 that we've already paid for the audit, plus this additional $15,000 to cover this unfunded mandate from TRS. Any questions about this one? The second one is about the furniture bid. The superintendent recommends accepting the highlighted price per line item on the attached bid tabulation sheet for classroom furniture at Wynderboro High School and replacement or growth throughout the district. The total cost will be approximately $559,000, but we are also asking for a contingency of 10% for adjustments in the quantity and permission to go to the next loss bid if product or standards, product standards or timeliness of delivery becomes an issue. So we're asking for $615,197. And this will come out of the general fund, about $80,000 out of the general fund, and then out of our E-Loss Capital Projects Funds, $535,000. Wynderboro High School will be receiving a 16-classroom pod along with renovations in the summer of 2026. As part of this pod addition and renovations, new furniture is needed. We also have a need for growth and replacement throughout the district. A request for bid was issued and 15 vendors responded. Recommendations are based on best-priced, most durable product and uniformity of products and timeliness of delivery. We hope that most of these products come in before the end of fiscal year 2025, but we've been burnt before. So we always anticipate delays and if that happens, we would use the 2026 budget in the capital projects funds. The capital projects funds is a multi-year fund, meaning that the purchase orders do not expire at June 30th like the general fund and special revenue funds do. It just rolls into the next year. We anticipate receiving $21 million in SPOLOs funds, of which 13 million will cover the debt service, leaving 8 million plus the $45 million that we received in bonds last week to cover our capital projects expenses going forward. So this was budgeted for fiscal year 2025, however, the product may not get here in time to be in that fiscal year 2025, but since it's capital projects, it can roll to the next year. Any questions?
Thank you for the ageist information. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Anytime. Thank you.
Move to consent?
Yes.
All right. And now, Mr. Pernod, System Operations.
Good evening. We have two information items, two action items tonight in System Operations. Our information items are updates of our current projects. The first is our Performing Arts Center. We're on schedule for completion right now, completing interior finishes and cleanup both inside and outside the building. And we expect punch lists and inspections and training to take place shortly thereafter. But moving right along out there, looking good. We have begun construction of the, or preparation for the pod at Wynderboro High School. And so far, that includes site demolition. We expect grading to begin here in the next several days. And the pod units themselves will begin to come on site the week of spring break. We hope to have, weather permitting, all those on site by the end of spring break. Those are our two information items. Any questions with those?
What's the estimated move-in date of the PAC?
So we've got training that has to take place and that's a big component for us. We want to get that complete, but substantial completion is in the middle of April. And I would normally say, you know, we want another six weeks there for punch lists and move-in. So certainly by the 1st of July. We expect to have a band event there, July 9, I believe it is. So shoot for that 1st of July to be moved in.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. Our two action items tonight, both associated with closeout of two recent projects. This is County Line Elementary School renovation and Bethlehem Elementary School renovation. These were multi-phase projects over the summer of '23 and '24. So they were completed summer of '24. All payments have been made, closeout documents have been received. The last check mark we have to make to receive our final 10% The last check mark we have to make to receive our final 10% of state capital outlay funds is to get a board resolution signed by the superintendent and board chair stating that we don't have any outstanding claims, everybody's been paid. And so we're asking the superintendent to recommend the final closing out of the County Line Elementary School and Bethlehem Elementary School renovation projects.
Okay. Consent?
Yeah.
Okay. That concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurnow. All right, moving along to teaching and learning. Dr. Bowen.
Good evening. Teaching and learning has one report and one action item. We will begin with the report regarding pre-K or our pre-kindergarten program, which is very popular in Barrow County. We typically have a waiting list. And along with that many numbers comes a tedious process, a lottery process, that we have worked over the past five years to automate. And so we are very excited that we no longer have to put those balls in the hopper and turn the crank and pull those numbers. We now have an automated process and Dr. James is going to explain that to us. Just to give you context, as of today, we have 380 pre-K students enrolled across our 10 elementary schools. So I welcome Dr. James to the podium to explain our new automated process.
Good evening. As Dr. Moulton mentioned, I will provide an overview for you guys. In this presentation, we'll share some timeline dates, some exciting updates with the 24-25 pre-K lottery, share the pre-K lottery platform with you so you have an idea of what it looks like from the parent view as well as from the pre-K staff view, and some new incentives for our Barrow County employees. Okay, so we started back in September, working with our Barrow County IT department here as well as Walton County to help us build our pre-K platform. We met with our communications team and marketing team in October to determine our marketing strategies to reach the needs of our pre-K families. In December, we, Walton County was able to complete the Barrow County bill for our pre-K program. And Ms. Bailey and I completed a few test runs over the month of December to ensure that we were ready for our February lottery, I mean, I'm sorry, our March lottery. We recently had our pre-K lottery March 17th and we are currently in the process of accepting and completing pre-K registrations. The 2025 pre-K application window was available from February 3rd through the 28th. Families had access to information through the school system website, which is also reflective on the screen. Once accessing the website, parents were able to complete the 2025-26 registration process electronically. Access to the registration form was provided in multiple languages. And once the 25-26 button was selected, parents were directed to the screen on the next slide. Following the welcome message at the top of the screen, the application page outlined the application guidelines, including attendance requirements and all required documents once completing or being selected for the pre-K lottery. The application process also included a step for parents to complete verification, address verification, excuse me. This slide reflects a different view with the addresses for the school system attendance zone, pre-populated and accessible via a drop-down feature. Once families completed and submitted the application, an email was auto-generated to confirm receipt of the application via email notification. The information at the bottom of this slide will also be reflected on the next slide. And it gives, it gave parents just a reminder of when our pre-K registration will begin and things that they should know as far as what documents they will need to submit as well as accepting their seats. And this slide also reflects the bottom portion on the previous slide and it was the email notification, including just again, some of those pre-K notifications and some of those documents that were required. On the slide that's, Matt, will you go back one? Thank you. So on March 17th, as mentioned, we had our pre-K lottery. Parents received an email notification offering them the pre-K seat. This link in this particular email had a slide for parents to click on this link and finalize their decision. So once they clicked on the link, they had the option to either accept the pre-K lottery seat or decline the lottery seat. Once the seat was accepted, parents received this notification email, just reminding them again of attendance requirements of pre-K documentation that they would need for the pre-K lottery and just reminding them again that the pre-K lottery registration due date was April 18th. Okay? This slide reflects the notification families received if they were not selected for a seat in the lottery. Those students were placed on the waitlist and the order drawn and they will be notified if seats become available. And we've actually had a few seats that did become available and families were notified. And it was just this simple. It was literally a click of the button. So we, Margaret and I uploaded this information from our pre-K portal and we clicked the button and we ran the drawing process, took all of maybe a few seconds. So as far as the pre-K management site, so this is a view of the management side of the lottery process. It gives us an idea of all of our families that have accepted seats, families that may have declined seats, families that are on the waiting list, as well as if we have employee families, out-of-zone families, which are typically our employee families, and if we don't have an address that we, and we need to go back and confirm address. So it gives us a lot of helpful information. All right, so again, our pre-K registration, last day to register is April 18th. We are doing this a lot earlier than we have in years past. This gives our school leaders the opportunity to plan accordingly and for us to make sure that all of our pre-K classes are funded before we enter the 25-26 school year. And we have an exciting new part of our pre-K lottery. This year, we have priority seating. So all of our Barrow County employees that were legal guardians automatically received a seat for the school that they selected. They were notified prior to the lottery, so they were ready and they also plan on completing registration by April 18th. And this is an older slide, but I do want to provide you guys with updated data. This slide gives us an idea of all of our schools, our max numbers, as well as how many people have been offered a seat, who's accepted the seat and who's on the waiting list. So as of 3/19, we had 606 total pre-K lottery applications, which was an increase from last year. As Dr. Moulton mentioned, we offer 380 seats total. Forty-three of the 380 seats were automatic employee placement for employee children, which again was a new incentive for hiring and retention. We had 337 seats that were remaining for our community. And as of today, every pre-K family has accepted their seat. So we have 380 seats that have been accepted and we are in the process of making sure that they are going through the registration process and that if they need any help prior to the 18th, that we're here to help them. We currently have 209 students on our waiting list. And we are excited to start bold beginnings and bright futures with our new pre-K families. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James, and thank you, John St. Clair. You were instrumental in making sure that that process worked and all of the technology needed to operate in the right manner. So we appreciate you as well, Mr. St. Clair. Okay, for our action item. This is our request to waive promotion and retention consequences that are tied to Georgia milestones under the direction of the Georgia Department of Education. School district with flexibility contracts can use input from teachers and parent placement committees, class performance and formative tools to determine the need to promote or retain students. Promotion and retention decisions for the 2024-2025 school year will not be based on performance on the Georgia Milestone Test. So we would like to request waiving of this policy, its board policy IHE, promotion and retention, so that promotion is not tied to the Georgia Milestones Test on its own and also that we do not have to retest students in the summer for that promotion piece of that. Therefore, the superintendent recommends a temporary waiver of policy IHE, promotion and retention through July 31st, 2025.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. What are we going to base it on if we're not, are we going to use the MAP testing or what are we going to use?
Leaders will take MAP into consideration. They will actually take student performance across the entire year into consideration and some other factors, but not singly the Georgia Milestones Test.
Okay.
So this is how it's always been done, correct? Since this policy's been in place?
Yes, this is what we have requested over the past few years. And also, we're looking at possibly revising the policy so that we do not have to come back to the podium annually. We have some calls in to make sure that we're exercising that correctly through our charter.
Do we have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Dr. Moulton, do we have a number of students that would not, a number of students that would not be promoted because of this policy?
We may have an estimate, Jenny. Would you like to give us an estimate on that?
We don't have to do it right now.
I would hate to, yes, but I can get it for you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. So we'll come back to you with an estimate. Jenny has all numbers in her head, as I expect her to do so. We will certainly get that back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Moulton.
All right, thank you.
Move to consent?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Dr. Kurtz, Human Resources.
Human Resources has one single agenda item, right of recruitment and hiring update. And first, I want to thank Teaching and Learning for making it easier for our teachers with four-year-olds to find a spot for their kiddos in their own school. Those kinds of things really help out, so thank you, guys. We began the hiring process with some high-needs positions, some highly specialized special education positions, as well as speech-language pathologists and psychologists in early January. And because of that early start, we were able to get some positions filled that have been difficult to fill all year, so we're excited about that. The full staff allotments went out early February. And as we talked about it, the last month, we had to make some internal transfers as we were balancing loads there. And to date, we have made 41 internal transfers in an effort to, one, meet the needs of our schools and our students, but, two, get our staff where they most want to be or as close as we can. And our school leaders have just done a fabulous job doing that well, but also doing that quickly, because the earlier we can hire, the better folks we can get. So in the month or a little more than a month since we have opened up those allotments and began hiring, we've held a career fair. And in that career fair, we had over 110 candidates attend, which is about 20% higher than last year. And so far this hiring season, we've filled 70 positions, 65 of those positions being certified. Generally, the classified positions are filled a little bit closer to the time the job would start, and they're filled all year long because they're not dependent on a contract. So those will happen throughout the year, so that's not the big worry. While we've been able to hire early, been able to move a lot of folks closer to where they want to be and be able to get the teachers right where our kids need them to be, we still have a significant number of openings. We have 102 total openings in the district, with 76 of those being certified openings. Again, we've filled 65 certified openings in the past month plus a few days. So we do have some confidence we can fill those, but we are still looking for great folks. And so if you or anyone you know, love or care about wants to make an incredible difference having a fun time in any of our schools or departments, we have a variety of jobs open everywhere and it's a great career. It's a great life to come to work every single day and make a difference, not only for the kids in front of you, but for the entire community. And so I would encourage folks to look at our website or get in touch with us to think about what you want to do for the rest of your life for your community and your kiddos. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kurtz. All right, Dr. Thompson, Strategic Information Systems.
I have this evening, three items of information and one action item that we're going to ask for a vote on the April board meeting for you. First off, we have our communications report for February posted. We've gone through this at a couple meetings, so I'm not going to belabor the point and go through it again, but that is posted there for your review and there's a lot of good information in there about the work that our communications team and our schools have done during the month of February. You also have the 120th day count. This was on March 3rd. You can see we had 15,413 students on March 3rd. Our next 140th day count should be coming up on April 1st, so we look forward to that. So those two are there for your informational review. For our last information item and our action item, I'm going to ask for Mr. St. Clair, our Director of Technology, to come up and talk through those with you.
Thank you. At the February work session, the board approved a RFP for the purchase of Logitech headsets. It was awarded to the low-bid respondent, Products Unlimited. Subsequently, we wrote the purchase order and approximately two weeks later, we heard from the manufacturer that they had not received the order and we reached out. And to cut it short, the ordered vendor was not able to honor their bid. CDWG was the next lowest bid. They agreed to honor the winning price from the low-bid respondent, so we've switched the purchase over to them. I'd like to tell you, this doesn't happen very often, but this isn't the first time something like this has happened, but in the interest of transparency and what was the word, letting you see how the sausage is made, we thought we would bring this forward to you as an, as a information item. What happened in this case was the vendor made the proposal to us prior to them securing their supply chain. And then once they were awarded it, they went out and tried to find somebody to get it at the price they offered it to us and they couldn't. So we will make note of that. So are there any questions on that? Okay, thank you. The action item of the district's Microsoft licensing, which covers Windows, Office, email, Microsoft Teams, our antivirus, Defender, Inpoint Security and a whole suite of extra things as well, is due for renewal this year. The district and most districts use Microsoft Enrollment for Education solution, hereafter EES-based licensing, which is a model that they provide to school systems. Among the other benefits, it provides no-cost software versions upgrades during the course of the contract. So we're currently on Windows 11. When Windows 12 comes out, as long as we've got this contract, we don't pay to upgrade again, like you would if you bought piecemeal. It provides benefits for our employees at home to install the Microsoft Office suite at no cost. It provides us free licensing for our students based on our having faculty and staff licensing we paid for and a whole multi-page suite of benefits. An RFP was posted, 12 vendors responded. The lowest bid response, Synectix, did not meet the terms of the RFP. They proposed licensing items that were not of the EES licensing, which was explicitly required in the RFP. Mailer and Company was unable to provide verification. They weren't able to provide a quote or proof of agreement with the reseller authorized to provide EES licensing. They were not able to provide verification of the supply chain, which we just saw was relevant on the last one, for the proposal one asked. And that was over the course of three days, multiple times trying to get them to verify they could offer to us what they were promising. The next lowest bid, CDWG, met the terms of the RFP. They've done similar business with the district in the past and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. To accommodate system growth and to cover any potential cost increase due to fluctuating market conditions, we are asking for a cost increase allowance in addition to the price that CDW gave us, a cost increase allowance of a maximum of 5% per year. So for clarity, the per-unit pricing, the per-license pricing, doesn't change in years one through three, but we get the option to renew in years four and to renew in years five. In fact, we are currently in year four of the previous contract. When I got the renewal price, I didn't think it was competitive, so we went out to bid again. But for the first three years, the per-unit price will not change, so the only cost increase in years one through three would be due to system growth as we add more licensing, as we add more staff or other services. So per-unit pricing is not guaranteed, however, in years four and five if we decide to renew with them. So the financial impact is $221,602.77 in the first year with a maximum growth allotment of 5% per year in years two through five. These will be out of ITS funds. So the superintendent recommends awarding the renewal of Microsoft EES licensing to CDWG of Vernon Hills in the amount of $221,602. CDWG of Vernon Hills in the amount of $221,602.77 per year, renewal up to a maximum of five years, with an allowance of a maximum 5% increase in cost per year.
Move to the senior.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. At this time, we will move into executive session to discuss a deliberated funding appointment, employment compensation, hiring disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation, or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. Have a motion?
Sir Morden.
Second.
Second. All right, we'll return.
Another elective credit. This internship serves as a practical, paid work experience. The program concludes with full-time job assistance after graduation. Operating out of Sims Academy, the YES program is available to seniors from Wynder Barrow High School, Appalachia High School, and the Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. The program's overarching purpose is to help students with barriers to employment, transition to the workforce after high school. The program achieves these goals with activities like tours to local manufacturing and distribution centers, on-campus training in employability skills, and paid internships with community partners. These internships provide a sheltered work experience, better preparing students for successful entry into the workforce. The YES program at Sims Academy is a transformative initiative, uniquely positioned to empower high school seniors for independent employment. By seamlessly integrating classroom learning, hands-on internships, and community partnerships, the program not only equips students with essential skills, but also fosters a supportive environment that champions their journey toward a successful transition to the workforce.
The 2024 to 2025 Barrow County School System Teachers of the Year. Auburn Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Callie McNeil.
Austin Road Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Tony Neff.
Bethlehem Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Katie DeCotto.
County Line Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Laura Haley.
Holson Beck Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Kelly Merhoff.
Kennedy Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Ansley Barrera.
Wynder Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Lee Davis.
Yargo Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Dr. Nicole Mace.
Bear Creek Middle School Teacher of the Year, Marcy Martin.
Hayman Morris Middle School Teacher of the Year, Jennifer Beatty.
Westside Middle School Teacher of the Year, Rachel Muldro.
Appalachia High School Teacher of the Year, Michelle Yearly.
Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy Teacher of the Year, Kendall Argo.
Wynder Barrow High School Teacher of the Year, Melissa Effridge.
Arts and Innovation Magnet Program Teacher of the Year, Jennifer Stockwell.
Horizon Program Teacher of the Year, Dr. Amanda Latimer.
Bramlett Elementary School Teacher of the Year and District finalist, Carrie Tilson.
Let's go. Whoosh, whoosh, whoosh. Oh, Ian was listening. I love it. You're doing good. Great job. Y'all are art helpers today, and I love it.
Stateum Elementary School Teacher of the Year and District finalist, Sandra Cash.
All right, you've got three seconds to strike your pose. You ready? So everyone's gesture dog is going to be what? Different. Y'all can pose your people interacting with one another.
Sims Academy of Innovation and Technology Teacher of the Year and District finalist, Amy Wilson.
So is the basic unit of life and found in organism. Well, when he types something in, the circle will appear. Alondra Fuentes Bravo.
My name is Brooke Bradberry. I am an ESOL teacher at Russell Middle School, and I am Barrow County School System's Teacher of the Year. I am a child of a military parent, so I moved schools a lot. And as I moved through school, I never really had that connection with teachers that I know a lot of teachers talk about, that they had this one teacher that made them want to become a teacher, and I never really had that. And so, I decided when I entered this profession, that I wanted to be that teacher for my students, that they could look back and say, I had a connection with a teacher. Ms. Bradberry cared about me. Ms. Bradberry came to my extracurriculars. She made sure that I did what I needed to do to be successful in school and beyond. And so, that really matters to me, to be able to give that back to my students, so that they don't necessarily have the same experience that I had when I went through school. I think the biggest thing that I enjoy about teaching is seeing my students recognize that they have grown and that they have learned. When they get to me in August, and they are struggling to read, struggling to write, and then throughout the year, they are able to monitor their progress and see, wow, I actually can read, I actually can enjoy something that was once difficult for me. That brings me the most joy in teaching. Also, I cannot do this without the awesome students and families that I serve. Just being in communication with them in the classroom, outside of the classroom, they inspire me by their hard work and their diligence, that if they can continue showing up every day, then I can continue showing up with a smile on my face and ready to be who they need me to be. And once we establish that relationship, it is just a cyclical event of inspiring and being inspired, and I wouldn't have it any other way. It is an honor to be chosen as Teacher of the Year for the Barrow County School System. To me, this means that the hard work that my students do, that their families do, that I do every day, and my team does every day, matters. And so, I am honored, I am thankful, I am humbled, and very appreciative of this.
Congratulations to our Barrow County School System Teachers of the Year.
My name is Andrea Mason. I am the academic interventionist here at County Line Elementary. This is my 23rd year teaching, and I have been at County Line my entire career. So my role at our school, we have decided to have academic intervention focused on reading. So what I do is I work with small groups of students throughout the day that are in need of some extra support in reading with their phonics and reading skills. So I work with small groups from the time I come in until the end of the day. They're usually in my room for about 30 to 40 minutes, depending on the need of that group. I grew up the oldest child in my family with two younger sisters, and both of our parents worked a lot. And so, I was always kind of the caregiver, the little mother and teacher to my sisters. And so, I just always worked with them, helped them, and so I developed a love of helping them. And so, I think that that was kind of the first steps of planting that seed to want to teach. My grandfather was a teacher, my uncle's a teacher, so we have some teachers in our family. So it's just always, I'm not really sure of an actual age when I decided I'm going to be a teacher. I think it's just always something that has been a part of my life, and so I knew it would be something that I would go into when I grew up. I think it's very important for new teachers, and really every teacher, to never give up that love of learning, and to also understand that you will never know everything that you need to know to do this job. There's always something more to learn. There's always something more that you can do to better yourself and to improve your instruction for your students. And so, I think it's important to have the attitude that you will never know everything you need to know, that you have to continually learn new strategies, new instructional practices, and also to know that you can learn from the people around you that you're working with. Teachers change lives. That's the number-one thing, whether it's from a relationship that you've built with students, or from the academics that you've taught them, you're changing their lives. And I think it's important for people to realize that that's what we do, that's why we are teachers, because we have this passion for helping our students become wonderful, contributing members of society. And by doing what we do here, then we're ensuring that they're going to go on and have, you know, hopefully, a really great life.
My name is Jesus Suarez, and I'm a senior at Appalachia High School. A short story from my childhood to where I am today is that I grew up in a Mexican-American household with my older brother. And through my time in high school, I've been fortunate enough to have been accompanied by my friends, my family, and various teachers who have guided me along my way. Through soccer, I've been able to learn very important ideals and morals that I can use in my own life, such as discipline, hard work, and always keeping a positive and uplifting mentality. A teacher that's made a lasting impression on me, I'd say, is Mr. Bizzotti. He's always been there for me since freshman year, and even to this day as a senior. He's someone I can go to if I ever have a question, or I need help with school. He's always been a very supportive role model, not just for me, but for the entire student body. The biggest accomplishment that I'd say I'd have is being one of the top 10 students in my student body. I think it's a very good achievement and recognition to be recognized among such a big and competitive student body. After high school, I plan to attend Emory University, where I pursue a bachelor's in biology while on the pre-med track, and one day, I hope to aspire to become a doctor. And if possible, I'd hope to continue my hobby and interest of playing soccer in college. One piece of advice I'd give to myself as a freshman is that always take everything opportunity that you're given. You never know what can happen, and you should always keep a positive mindset, no matter what scenario you're in. I have to give a big thanks to my family for always being there for me, even during my toughest times. Last year, I was unfortunate enough to have torn my ACL, and during that time, I really began to understand how much my family meant to me. They were there for me every single day, and I would say that I think I wouldn't be where I am today without them. Their support throughout my whole life has been unwavering, and I'd say that I'm very grateful that, I'd say it's impossible to repay them back for everything they've done for me. And especially for my brother, he's been there for me every single step of my life. He's always been a role model I can look up to and that I can always look towards if I ever need help in life.
My name is Connor Manning. I attend Wynder Barrow High School as a senior, and I went with TSA to Nationals. TSA is the Technology Students Association, and we work on completing projects, engineering-based, and competing in that field. I originally started TSA in 10th grade. I took engineering in a 9th-grade class, and I fell in love with it, so I wanted to pursue that further, so I joined the club. So I made a 1/4 inch to a foot scale model of a yacht, a 45-foot yacht. It sleeps four to six people. It is equipped with a bathroom, a kitchen, and extra storage. It is also solar-powered, so all the electronics on the boat are controlled by solar power. And the engines are hybrid engines, so it can reuse the solar power and the electricity produced by the engines to power the boat. I had to learn a lot about 3D modeling further than I ever had before. It took a lot of effort and practice to get organic shapes and such finishes that it actually looks like a boat and not just some amalgamation of plastic. And through TSA, I learned further how to expand my skills in that, as well as in laser cutting and engraving. It helped me with that, and also my attention to detail has greatly been expanded, as it took a lot of hard, tiny little fixings of stuff to get it to look nice. Winning Nationals was a really relieving thing for me. When they originally called us up, they called the top 10 people up on stage, and they started from third place to first place. When I heard my name not getting called third or second, I was kind of getting stressed out. I was like, I probably didn't place. And then, the final, it was first place, and it was, they called my name. Just hearing everyone clap and the cheering of thousands of people was just really relieving and really uplifting. My next steps, hopefully Nationals bound this year, I am going to do, hopefully, another transportation-based engineering project. I want to thank my coach and my team for helping me with doing all of this, and just helping me push through such a hard experience of getting everything done.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Dawson, and I'm a senior here at the Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. I came here to Bassett not knowing that there was a robotics program in the first place, but I came here to Bassett because it was the new big school on the block. I remember, in middle school, they came to us at Westside and said, there's a new high school coming up, and we're building it right now, and you can enroll. Of course, I'm going to take that opportunity. This is a brand-new school with materials that are top-of-the-line, highest-tech, brand-new. And I just took the opportunity. I saw a good opportunity, I took it, and it was the Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. How could I not accept something like that if I'm going into the computer science field? In high school, this is going to sound really bad, but in high school, the most memorable experiences I have are the worst experiences I have. But I think that's because, after I found the solution, it gave me the most sense of accomplishment, the most sense of pride, because I finally found out the error that was causing everything. It was usually, I typed something wrong, or I put in the wrong variable, and when I finally just saw that little mistake and fixed it, everything started working, everything was fluent, everything started going along like it was lively. And I was so happy to see this thing I was working on for the past, like, month, two weeks, day even, start working again. And I was always so happy. If I had to pick someone from everyone I've ever met, it has to be Ms. Knowles. Ms. Knowles has been my computer science teacher for the longest time. I've had her through APS, APCSP, game design, APCSA, and even now, in work-based learning, I go to her and ask her questions, and she still knows the answers to all of them. Ms. Knowles is a very, very good teacher. She'll always just, like, stand up, walk around, help people with problems. She'll never say something like, just look it up on Google. She'll go to it, see the problem, say, how can we work through this together? My future plans right now for graduation are kind of iffy, I'd say. Right now, I've been accepted into UGA. I've also been given the honor of getting an internship at Lockheed Martin. My parents want me to go to college, so I will. And the short and sweet of it, I'm going to college because my parents asked me to, and I love my parents. My biggest dream right now is if I get out of college, get an internship, get a job, in my free time, start making a video game, which I'm very proud of. I've had this idea in my head for years for this video game. It's just generally, I need this experience on how to program, how to draw, how to make music, do all these things, how to make a video game in general. What's the process? I'm trying to get as much experience as I can right now, and through work-based learning, through people, through talking to other people in general, just learn how to make things, make a video game. I've a lot of small, tiny accomplishments that I'm very proud of, things I can't even remember, but I know happened, that I'm always happy about. But if I had to name something, it'd be what I'm doing right now. Working on the Mono Project, which is a website, I started from scratch when I didn't even know how to make a website, how to know how to make an interactable interface with a website, all this and that, and communicate with an SQL, a database, that actually stores all this information. When I started my work-based SQL, a database, that actually stores all this information. When I started my work-based learning semester, like, last semester, I had absolutely no clue what I was doing, what I was willing to learn. And I learned from every possible source I could. It's really taught me a lot about cybersecurity, how to build a website, how to maintain a website, what the process is to build and create and maintain all this and that for a simple website. I think the biggest accomplishment right now I've had in high school is the connections I've made along this whole path through not only engineering software, but through with people too. I know how to communicate better. I know how to build. I know how to engineer. I know what it feels like to be working a part of a team. And I think that's the biggest thing you can learn from anything, how to communicate, how to work, how to work as a team. And I think that's the biggest accomplishment anyone can get. Try your best, always be willing to learn, and most importantly, never give up what you're doing. Always follow that dream, always follow the goal that you have, and never, ever let anyone tell you otherwise. Always follow the dream.
I would describe Kelly and Ben as family.
Ben and Kelly, we are so excited to recognize both of you as our February Community Members of the Month. We appreciate everything you pour into our community and our schools, and this is just a small token to say thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our absolute pleasure.
Truly. I know Ben and Kelly McDaniel through a number of interactions I've had with them over the past five to six years in Barrow County. Ben McDaniel and I were in the same Leadership Barrow class, the class of 2019, and I have gotten to know Kelly through different opportunities through the school system, like the Barrow Leadership Partnership.
Kelly has been kind of the boots-on-the-ground person with our parent education workshops. She's fantastic, of course, with children. She's a children's librarian, and she works with the parents. She's always getting a lot of compliments from them.
For me, it's an honor to be recognized with my wife, because even before I was in Family Connection, when I worked back in Parks and Recreation out of college, like, we've both been public servants for a very long time. And it's so cool to go back to it again, that the kid that went to Auburn Elementary, Holson Beck Elementary, Bethlehem Elementary, I know I'm missing some, Winder Barrel Middle School as well, that same kid to be able to come back 20, 30 years later and just be a contributing member, like, it's the best feeling in the world for me.
Yeah, I feel honored. I mean, we've worked so closely with the school system through my work for years now. I mean, seven, eight years, I've been with my role for eight years, so all eight years we've worked hand-in-hand with Barrow County. And yeah, I just feel honored. I feel like we're leaving a legacy of something for our kids to be proud of. And, you know, it is nice to be honored with Ben, because Ben is the very front-facing half of our couple. And I am very frequently behind the scenes, and, you know, I'm working hard, kind of, to help push other people forward. But it's really nice to be here.
I trust them so much. There are so many people in the world that will tell you one thing and go behind your back and say something else. But with Kelly and Ben, I know that what they say to me, they're saying to anybody else. They're just always so positive. I guess maybe that's one good word, too, for them, would be positive. They have an incredibly positive impact on the whole Barrow community.
I love the fact that I moved back to Winder, that I'm able to be a contributing member of the Barrow County Society, and being able to kind of punch in when needed to be able to make things better, whether through its coaching, or serving as a mentor, or connecting resources, or helping develop the workforce of tomorrow through Sims Academy and Linear Tech. Like, that's what it's all about for me, is making sure, not necessarily for my kids, but my kids' kids have a better future in Barrow County.
Ben is known for being a community builder. He does that through formal programs, but he also does it informally. He organizes coffee on Tuesday mornings, where everyone is welcome to come and build relationships and get to know each other and just be together. Kelly does the same thing, whether she is involved in the Holson Beck School Governance Team or another organization. She is bringing people together and building relationships and having a positive impact.
Barrow County is where we've chosen to live. We don't just work here, we live here. All of our children attend the school system here. The school system has poured so much into our children. It's been, it actually makes me really emotional. I try not to cry when I talk about it, but it's really emotional seeing how much the school has done for our children through COVID, through the crazy fire that Holson Beck had to deal with last year. We have seen nothing but caring professionals pouring into our children nonstop. And so anytime we're able to give back in any kind of way to help support the school system, like, we're there, whatever you need. And, you know, and it's not just our kids. We chose Barrow County because we love the area. We wanted our children to have, you know, diverse experiences, where they got to meet lots of different kinds of people. And Barrow County provides that for us, and we want to make sure, you know, a rising tide lifts all boats, I guess. So we want to make it better for everybody.
I feel like if you're involved in your school, your kids are in good shape. It's just going to work out, and it has.
Both Ben and Kelly, they care about this community, they care about our school system, and they truly care about our future.
Hi, my name is Barbie Culp, and I'm the Barrow County Mentor Coordinator. And today I'm here with Mary, and she is a mentor at Holson Beck Elementary.
I am. I am so lucky because I have a second grader. He's so sweet, so sweet. I was so glad to see him back after the landfill fiasco and they were digital learning, and so I was delighted to see him back. He's young enough, he still likes to give hugs. I wanted to do something at Holson Beck because I live very close there. And I think I volunteered for reading, and you suggested the mentoring program. Well, when I was working, I was mentored at the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and I appreciated it very much. And then I became a mentor eventually there. And so when you approached about the program here in the county, I thought, that's perfect. I don't know if I'm a typical mentor. I love children. I think that's the basic requirement, is that you care about them, and you're sincere in caring about them. And if you do that, that's really all they need. They will be like little flowers to the sun. I take a little craft of some kind, not expensive, and we start with that. And then that just gives us a chance to just kind of talk while we're busy with our fingers doing things. I also take a little snack, I hope that's okay, you know, a little pack of crackers or cookies. And he's always happy about that. If you're thinking about mentoring, the best thing I can tell you is you get back so much more than you ever give. It's just heartwarming. And I walk out of the school every week with a big smile on my face, because to be with such a sweet young man.
I think mentoring is a lot simpler than what people think it is. I think it sounds scary, it sounds overwhelming, it sounds like a huge commitment. And while it is a commitment, it is not, it's simple. It's a simple process of just caring for someone and listening, really. So, again, we're always looking for mentors in Barrow County. If you work from home and have 30 minutes a week to spare, if you are retired, if you're a parent and you have 30 minutes to spare, we'd love to have you join our mentoring program and spend time with a student.
I think that there are a lot of children of all ages who would benefit from knowing that someone cares enough to be with them on a regular basis.
This is where traditions begin and legacies are built.
At Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy, we're sparking innovations of tomorrow by empowering our students today. Our academic course offerings are rigorous to prepare students for life beyond high school. And we offer a variety of art programs that encourage students to express themselves, no matter the medium. We are a non-traditional school where students will discover their passion, prepare for their future, and explore the intersection where the arts and sciences complement one another. This is Bassa, and we are the Blazers.
Hi, I am Lynn Tillman. You can refer to me as the Tillminator. That's what I've been being called since 1989, when the Terminator movies were popular. And I teach music at County Line Elementary School. And this is my room. I have all kinds of things that I have acquired through the fundraising website called Donors Shoes. Got some kongas and bongos. And I have this sweet, totally sweet 1970s vintage set of wood blocks. Love those. I have some African djembe's. I got some basses. We got, oh, we got a big doghouse bass. That's awesome, too. We have, I really don't know what they're called, but I call them flappophones. We got bells, we got tubano drums, I got a xylophone. These, these are mine personally. Nobody gets to touch those except me. And I got a drum set, which we are rocking on all the time. I first realized that I could potentially be good as a teacher back when I was in middle school. And I played the flute in Gwinnett County Sweetwater Middle School. And my band director realized that I'd already known my parts, and he asked me to help some of the people, not only in my section, but in other sections, to learn their parts better. So we'd go back in the practice room. I was teaching their parts, and I've always had a way of being able to break it down to its absolute simplest forms, that you don't even have to understand music to get what it is, and to teach on a need-to-know basis. This is all you need to know to be able to play this. Kind of like earlier when I was doing the basses, and I said, "All you got to do is press the yellow dot." They don't have to know that that's an E. They don't have to know that it's an E chord. All they have to know is, right now, press the yellow dot. When you see my footstep on yellow, you press yellow. The simplest form to get them to have success as quickly as possible. And it was back in middle school that I first realized that I had that in me, and that I could get people to learn with down to the simplest thing.
Teachers do amazing things.
Stuff.
Teachers do.
Fun activities.
I want them to know that teachers, we're not perfect. We can come in and we think, "I've got a plan, I'm doing good, I am going to teach." And then you come in here and you totally blow it. And sometimes you just blow it, and the kids laugh at you, and then you move on, and you fix it. And now I'm going to fix it. Okay, all right. So I was doing the...
My name's Hannah Hollingsworth, and I'm a senior at Appalachia High School. In my childhood, I grew up with a single mom and an older brother, so I was roughhousing around, you know, just trying to make it day by day. I was very independent as a kid, which honestly led me up to me being like a strong-willed and independent as I am today. I definitely want to thank my mom for teaching me all the life lessons that she taught me of being like on my own and really how to thrive in an unknown environment. And I just really want to thank my mom for teaching me those lessons. So softball and basketball really is just more than sports to me. Like, they were my whole life. I've played sports since I was six and seven. And when you face adversity in sports, you're obviously in a game you can't stop, and that led into like academics and life as well. Like, when there's a hard time, or like you're struggling on a test, you can't just stop. You just have to keep going. And sports have really taught me that no matter what the outcome is, everything's going to be okay, no matter if you win, lose, fail, pass, if something goes good or bad. Like, it's always going to work out how it's supposed to be. Mr. Bizzotti, he was my freshman history teacher and my sophomore history teacher. He definitely had the biggest impact on me because he cared about me on such like, more than academic level. He wanted me to thrive in my sports. He always listened to me when I was having a rough day, and he really did help me thrive in my academics. He constantly pushed me to do my best, constantly reassured me that what my grades are were good enough. And he just was always an ear to listen, and he was just a really good resource and a good mentor, honestly. I would say, right now, I am most proud of being top 10 in my class. That was definitely something I never thought would happen. I play two sports. I have two jobs. I am constantly working or constantly playing sports. So in trying to keep academics with all honors in AP classes, it's a really hard struggle, but Lord willing, I managed it. And I'm very proud of myself for persevering and getting all those late-night papers done. So I'm very proud of myself for that. So last semester, in August, I started an internship at the Northeast Georgia Medical Center in Winder. And I started off in the emergency room. I took the internship because I was like, I really want to expose myself to the medical field. And if I didn't like it now, I wouldn't have to worry about spending all that money on a degree that I didn't even want. So I started in the emergency room, and my first week was amazing. I saw so many things. I was exposed to so many different amazing people and people who really taught me and took their time to teach me about everything medical that they could in the short amount of time I was there. I was basically a tech by the end of my time in the emergency room. I did EKGs all by myself. I helped with blood work. I would run stuff to the lab. I would clean up any messes, bring patients, any blankets or drinks they wanted. And I was really just, I was really just there to help everybody out in the best way I could, but the experience in the emergency room was amazing. After nine weeks, I was then put in a different department. I was put in med surg, where I would talk to patients before and after surgery. I would just help them be comfortable. I would help my nurses out with anything they needed, anything they asked. I would more than gladly get it for them. And the relationships I built with all the nurses and medical staff there was amazing. I learned so much, and really because of them, I want to become a nurse to help people. And how they interact with people is something I aspire to do one day. So after graduation, I plan on going to GCSU or Georgia College and State University in Millilville. I plan on majoring in nursing, where hopefully I will become a NICU nurse or potentially an emergency room nurse. I love every aspect of the medical field, so if I really could just work in that and thrive in that, that would be a dream come true. I've applied for several scholarships, such as like the Hagan Scholarship. I will hear back from that one soon, but I'm just applying to really any like local and state scholarships I can get my hands on. So, fingers crossed, I can get some extra help with college money and become a nurse, because that has always been my dream. I would tell freshman Hannah not to stress so much. I would always freak out about my grades. I would always freak out about even the smallest inconveniences throughout the day. I would just tell myself, just keep going. It's not worth it to stress over the small things, because big picture, you're going to end up in the same place you want to be. So just don't stress, just let it go. And once I finally learned that, I'm in a much better place all around. Like, college is definitely going to be hard, but you made it through high school, so just keep going. And I would tell that to anybody. Like, any person thinking about going to college, it's going to be okay. It's going to be hard, but it's going to be worth it. So.
Project Search is a very unique transition program, different from anything we have in Barrow County. It started at Cincinnati Children's Hospital in Ohio in the mid-1990s. And now there are 610 sites in 47 states and 10 countries, including right here in Barrow County. To participate in Project Search, a student has to be a Barrow County student between the ages of 18 and 22, with barriers to employment such as intellectual or developmental disabilities. They have to be finished with their high school graduation requirements and willing to defer graduation until the end of their Project Search year. It's during that year that they come to the Winder Housing Authority here at the Wimberly Center, and they participate in three rotations that last anywhere from 10 to 12 weeks. They have a manager and a mentor that they report to and work alongside, along with skills training with our partners. And it's just a really unique program, because the end goal is part-time or full-time employment for the interns.
Here at the Wimberly Center, the Project Search students are learning a variety of different skills. They're learning data entry, they're learning accounts payable, payroll, records retention, they're learning how to shred, environmental services.
Restaurant sanitation, doing a lot of washing dishes and helping clean floors. There's a good aspect of prep, some general prep cook.
I do dishes, I do putts. It teaches you, if you were to walk out of the kitchen, how to do beads correctly.
I'm teaching them how to answer the phone, how to take messages, how to respond to, interact with people coming into the facility. interact with people coming into the facility.
Well, my first internship was in the front office, like in the receptionist area. And I learned how to like copy papers, scan stuff into the computer, answer the phone, and mail out letters.
We're cutting grass, we're harvesting crops, we're doing weeding, we're doing some irrigation work, digging, pretty much anything when it comes to working on the farm, we try and tackle it.
Well, my first internship, I learned how to cut grass, which I never learned how to do that.
The skills that the interns are learning through my department are their maintenance skills, um, they're learning lawn care skills, we're doing janitorial skills.
We both have rims, we both...
My task is to go along beside them and make sure that they have a good understanding of what the job is that they are being asked to do and for me to make sure that they are able to do it. And then I kind of back away and let them do their thing.
I learned how to use a knife better in culinary. And then, um, I learned how to use a drill, like putting pressure on it is a good way to use a drill like that.
They learn how to appropriately interact in a real workplace. It's not simulated in a classroom, it is an actual place of business.
We go over important topics like interview preparation, resumes, how to keep a job, job searching, how to deal with conflict resolution, work with different bosses, just a lot of different topics to prepare them for the workplace.
A lot of the things that our, our employees are doing, a lot of repetitive tasks and things of that nature are things that we are able to have the Project Search students handle and they do it quite well. And so it's just a cool collaboration and you have a lot of teamwork and synergy. So I love it. I've enjoyed having them.
They bring an excitement to general tasks that we kind of take as mundane tasks, but they bring excitement to that. And it re, you know, invigorates us to get excited about some of the things that we just take for granted.
Project Search has been an amazing benefit for all four of our interns this year. Without it, I'm not sure that they would have even known what they were capable of doing.
We get to both learn things, we get to get some work done and have a good time doing it.
What I like about it is because I keep my, it keeps me moving, it keeps me busy. And, um, it really helps me how to be able to do it, get a job.
Well, I think Project Search benefits the community because it is opening up an opportunity for students that have some type of a learning disability to be employed.
We don't want these kids leaving our school system at age 22 and not having a clear direction, not having somewhere to go and feel needed and feel productive and really demonstrate what their true abilities are.
It's been very much a learning experience, I think, on both ends and very enjoyable. They seem to always have a good attitude and to show up ready to work.
It's very educational for the interns and for us because we learn how to teach them.
It's teaching everybody something. The staff plus the interns, everybody's learning. Plus we're getting, you know, once they get acclimated to what we're doing, they're able to assist and help, um, which speeds things along. It benefits the company as a whole.
You get to work with new people and you get to, you get to learn new things and stuff.
Uh, I believe it, it offers them just some real world experience through these internships. Uh, I've, I've just really been honored to be part of it.
Project Search benefits the community by letting people from the community interact with the Project Search students. So people that may have had some stigma against people with disabilities get to meet these kids and realize they're just like anybody else and, and get to learn from that experience.
The Project Search students have grown quite significantly just in the short time that they've been here. They seem to be very happy to be here.
I've just been constantly blown away and I find myself bragging to my family and friends about the skills and the abilities that the interns have gained throughout this course of, of the, of the school year.
I think that their courage has grown, um, their determination to do things has grown. I just feel like that they're more confident in themselves now that they're working with us.
So I've seen the Project interns grow during my time with me by just really learning that they can do things that they didn't think they could do before and doing some tasks that they haven't done before and really enjoying it.
I love being able to see what the interns are gonna be doing and to be able to see how accomplished they are at each one of their tasks. I had no idea that they were all capable of so much.
They have a great attitude, they are very motivated, and I've just been impressed with them.
Project Search students have really changed the culture by making it a happier workplace. And, you know, that not only includes the Wynder Housing Authority, but all of our partners under roof. It's made it a happier place to be.
I would say it's brought everybody closer together. They love the environment working with, with the interns. Kind of brings happiness to the, to the whole group as a, as a whole here in the Wimberly Center, working with them.
I can't imagine having our Project Search program anywhere else because of the welcoming impact the Wynder Housing Authority staff has had on us.
I enjoy being here every day and learning new skills. And it's a perfect way to learn what a job world will look like in the future.
I feel good about working here because you get to learn new experience and knowing that it's not the same job over again, you get to learn different stuff and how to do that, different jobs.
It's really gotten me someplace that I've really enjoyed.
I believe these, uh, Project Search participants have a great chance to perform and not only just get a job, but to excel.
And we need for the community to get behind us and really give these kids the opportunity that they deserve. The community's gonna end up with some pretty fantastic employees.
I just think it's a great opportunity for these interns. It's something that they'll never forget and we will, we'll never forget here either.
Even if moving forward, we are not the direct mentors, I still would love to have some sort of involvement with Project Search. It's meant a lot to us.
It, it's just an awesome opportunity to pass something along to somebody who, who might never get the opportunity to do that and we're giving them that opportunity. So I think it's a great thing.
Their dreams of the future has changed. They have realized that they can do what they dream to do and there's resources for them to be able to do it.
I like Project Search because this taught me a lot more than, than any other place that I've been in.
I would definitely do Project Search again.
I will for Project Search.
Okay, Vicki, I'm so glad to be able to present you with a little token of our appreciation for being the March Community Member of the Month for Barrow County School System. Gretchen Hollingsworth nominated you for all the wonderful things you do for Bassa and the schools. Thank you.
Aw, thank you. I appreciate that. And I love you.
I love you too.
My name is Vicki Keebler. I am the Senior Director of the Chamber of Commerce here in Barrow County.
I am Gretchen Hollingsworth. I'm the Innovative Learning Coach here at Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. You might actually not remember the first time we met. We met at CFIT. You came to...
Ah, yes.
...observe a presentation that the first Lego League team was practicing. And I was helping out with the team that year.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. And they presented their gondola activity to Vicki and she donated her time to come in. You gave amazing feedback. Um, in fact, you have gondola experience and so...
Yes.
Um, she brought just a wealth of knowledge to the presentation. It really helped the students. But more recently, we served on the school governance team together here at Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy.
I missed that.
Every month would come, give good feedback, help us out. But even more so than that, just the way you connect to people in our community, your work with the chamber. One of your strengths, I think, is just keeping Barrow County that small-town feel, but still pushing the progress, connecting people, making sure that these positive relationships just continue to grow and grow. So I cannot thank you enough.
Aw, thank you.
Plus she trusts us with her grandchildren here at Bassa. And so we just think the, the world of you.
Um, the SGT, it was, it was something that was, I was approached and asked to be on. I'm like, okay, tell me about it. When I learned what it was, especially here at Bassa. It was so big that, you know, we got to connect with the students, we got to make decisions about their graduation, their crest, you know? We, um, helped with their fundraisers for their field trips.
Yes.
Um, you know, we got to go into the classroom and watch the teachers and the students, which if you have not done that, it is amazing what these students are doing nowadays. And I was a little like, oh, do you really want somebody? And you know what? I am so grateful that I was chosen to be on it because I really miss it. That was wonderful, a learning experience. And that's what got me to get my two granddaughters here at Bassa. I just fell in love and I'm like, y'all have to go.
That is great. And it's, it's a time commitment for sure. Um, and then when her term ended, she did not leave us high and dry. She actually helped us obtain two new community members, which bring such value to our school governance team. And we appreciate that too, because it is hard to, to lose people like you off the teams.
I was really surprised when I got the email. And I was not surprised at Gretchen nominating me, but you know, it was, we connected right away.
Right.
We did. We've connected straight through. It's just, it's just an honor to be able to be part of this school. And with the newness of it and, and watching it grow and it's just fabulous. You know, I have to be honest, I have the best job on the, on the planet if you ask me, because I get to meet all of y'all, you. I mean, and then I get to make connections for other people. And to me, that's just, I love doing that.
We love you.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything you do for our community.
Thank you.
The Barrow County School System has embraced a holistic approach to improving literacy outcomes for our children from birth through high school graduation. Research has shown that students who do not read proficiently by third grade are four times more likely to leave high school without a diploma. While our district's graduation rate has increased by 19 percentage points in the past eight years, we began to see concerning trends in kindergarten readiness during that same time. In 2014, 59% of kindergarteners were at or above benchmark standards. But by 2019, that had dropped to 41% and it fell further with the impact of the pandemic to 28% in 2021. Fewer children had the basic literacy skills in kindergarten, which meant it would be more challenging to reach the essential third grade reading levels necessary for long-term success. In the spring of 2021, BCSS was awarded the Literacy for Learning, Living, and Leading Grant from the Georgia Department of Education. As part of the L4GA initiative, our district developed specific goals for children from birth to age five, the first of which focused on literacy development through community partnerships. Barrow County is blessed to have a strong community supporting our schools and students. Research shows that reading aloud is the single most important thing a parent can do to help a child prepare for reading and learning. Yet 61% of low-income families do not have any age-appropriate books in their homes. The Barrow Book Partnership started in 2016 as an attempt to close the inequality gap in literacy development by making books more accessible to Barrow County's low-income families. Thanks to the L4GA grant, an already strong collaboration with the school system grew into the Barrow Literacy Partnership in the spring of 2022. Together, we pursue our common goals of promoting early literacy in birth-to-age-five children, enhancing family engagement, and nurturing a love of reading. The organization is collaboratively led by the Piedmont Regional Library System and the Barrow County School System. Its committee consists of numerous organizations that are each invested in the literacy of our young children. Members of the Barrow Literacy Partnership each serve on a task force. During the 2021-2022 school year, four main projects were completed. Our first project was the distribution of pre-K book bags. Every pre-K student in Barrow County received their own at-home library. Over 830 children attending private pre-K, Head Start, or Barrow County Schools pre-K received a book bag containing 35 books. Parents and caregivers now had books they could read at home with their children. We intentionally selected books which aligned with our Frog Street pre-K curriculum. Volunteers spent hours assembling each at-home library book bag and then distributed them to all pre-K classrooms throughout our community. Our second project was a virtual library visit. A library unit lesson was developed by our Georgia Pre-K Teacher of the Year. As part of the lesson, a fun and engaging video was produced by the Barrow Literacy Partnership to introduce students to the public library through a virtual tour. Read-aloud texts were provided for each teacher to support the lessons. Plus, over 1,500 copies of Pete the Cat Checks Out the Library were given to every pre-K and kindergarten student in the school system. A parent is a child's first teacher and can help their children learn essential reading skills by using five simple practices: read, write, sing, talk, and play. We hosted three Fun with Books workshops using these practices this summer for parents and children. Parents from Adult Literacy Barrow, pre-K, and Head Start were specifically invited to participate. Dinner was provided for all attendees. Each child received four new books to take home at the end of the fun-filled evening. Our final project of the year was our Babies and Toddlers Book Giveaway. Age-appropriate books were purchased for babies and toddlers. They were shared with other community agencies to distribute to the families they serve. Our volunteers also handed out books at community events such as the Barrow County Health Department WIC Farmers Markets. According to the 2020 census, there are approximately 5,600 children from birth to age five living in Barrow County. We are building on the existing strengths in our community and setting new literacy goals for the next three years to support every child. Through the Barrow Literacy Partnership, the Barrow County School System is striving to provide access to text and resources that will support early literacy and children's lifelong success in our community.
My name is Lance McNamara. I'm the Health Service Manager, Athletic Trainer for Barrow County School System. We're at Wynder Barrows High School practice today, covering football. And, and one of the things that we're always concerned about this time of the year is looking at heat illnesses, environments, things of that nature. So today, we're gonna discuss a little bit about what the athletic trainers do at Appalachia High School, at Bassa, as well as Wynder Barrows High School. Athletic trainers play a key role in the safety of the student athlete. We're involved in injury prevention, injury recognition, rehabilitation, counseling, but probably one of the key things is looking at environmental conditions. This unit here is called a Wet Bulb Globe Temperature Unit. Many years ago, we would kind of focus on what's called the heat index. Heat index is great. It focuses on heat, the dry temperature, as well as humidity. Wet bulb has been used by the United States Military, primarily the Marine Corps, and they use three components: the radiance of the sun, the humidity that we have, as well as a dry temperature. That gives a mathematical computation and then that point gives a number. And that number determines what modifications that we utilize for practice. So that number could be a green flag, a yellow flag, an orange flag, red flag, and a black flag. A black flag. When this, when this device gets to 92%, we have what's called a black flag, which means there's no physical activity whatsoever. When the number gets below 92, we get to 90 to 92, we're in what's called a red flag. That red flag is based upon time. We do not allow athletes to participate in the weather for more than 60 minutes. They have no equipment on whatsoever, but within that 60 minutes of activity, they're really only performing 40. They do 20 minutes of, of water rest breaks embedded. We get to orange. Orange is from 89 down to 86. Orange means that we just have to watch the at-risk individuals. We be sure that we have at least four water breaks per hour within a two-hour practice. We get down to yellow, which is below our 86, and that's discretionary. We just kind of have to make sure our kids are, have access to water. We give them plenty of water breaks and we kind of watch the at-risk. Anything below 82 is called green, which we don't have many issues from that. However, when we get to the score of 88, we also have to set up what's called a cool zone. So over here, a cool zone is that we happen to have a shade of tent. We have a water immersion tank that we can drop 30 gallons of ice water into a tank, about 58 degrees. We then place the individual into that tub and we reduce our core temperature quite effectively. So hopefully we never have to get to that because we... So hopefully, we never have to get to that because we are monitoring. We have unlimited water breaks for the student athlete. And because of our athletic trainers and our coaches, we focus on the students. In conclusion, Barrow County Schools is committed to student safety, not just in the classroom, but also in the athletic environment. We have athletic trainers, and it's their responsibility to work with our coaches to be able to identify potential injuries, whether it be through just competition, play, or the environment. So again, we've got some very good policies and procedures set in place to protect the student athlete. Thank you again, and remember, go Dogs, go Wildcats, go Blazers.
Mom and Dad, I'm finally here.
I'm big enough to go to kindergarten now.
My teacher told me that I'm totally rocking pre-K, and I'm very smart.
When I'm in kindergarten, I can get to learn more about math, reading, science, make new friends.
I'm so ready, and I'm so excited.
I've known you for four full years, and I know you sometimes forget things.
So please listen carefully.
Please remember to go online and register me for kindergarten.
There's important documents that you need to have, so start now.
They have a website that you can go to.
There's a bunch of answers to questions you might have.
Thanks for taking care of that.
Kindergarten, here I come.
Kindergarten, here I come.
Kindergarten, here I come.
My favorite part about Special Olympics is seeing all the schools come together, the teachers, the students, and the parents come out, all of our community supporters, and how it takes a team and a village, really, to come together to pull an event like this off. And just having the opportunity to celebrate our student athletes.
This is a very large event. This is actually our largest event since we started back a few years ago. COVID kind of shut down some numbers, and then we are back full force. We have about 500 athletes signed up for today. 500 student volunteers signed up to support us. And we have a bunch of adult volunteers that have come out. I would say about 50 people coming out here just to provide support for all these athletes. It takes so much effort to get all this together, and everyone's done beautifully. Making sure the day is run smoothly, fixing what needs to be done. Everyone's done amazing, and it's been, it's been an eight-month process, but we're finally here.
So my favorite event of Special Olympics is definitely going to be the relay races. It is so amazing to see the kids just run their hearts out with their buddy by their side. But my other favorite thing is when we do the athlete walk, and we have the opportunity to have a torchbearer lead the way, and have all the kids get to, you know, celebrate today's day and basically have everybody cheer them on at that time. That's, that's my favorite.
I have so many people that I could not do this day without. First, my Special Olympics Barrow County team. Our committee has put months of effort into this, so thank you, each of you. The PDC and the Transportation Department from Barrow County Schools have been a huge help. We could not have done this without the use of their facilities. And also, the transportation team has killed it today with getting everyone to and from this event. Also, we have vendors, the people who brought our Accony Flatables, all of our bouncy houses, and our, our volunteers that have done the sensory areas. Those are also people that have really helped today, really happen.
My name is Steven Casey, and I'm a senior here at Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. How did I get my start in sports? I think it's, it's kind of up in the air. But in seventh grade in middle school, I had played one year of rec basketball. And to me, it just kind of clicked, and I fell in love with the sport there. And I loved to be active and just run around and be a little kid. And so after basketball, I had a ton of energy. My parents used to give me a hard time about it. And they said, hey, why don't you try out for running? And so I ended up doing track also my seventh grade season, which was a lot of fun. I had awesome teammates. And then my eighth grade year, I did cross country for the first time, which was a new experience, but I thoroughly enjoyed it. And then I also did track my eighth grade year, but COVID cut that short, unfortunately. So I think coming to Bassa was kind of a shocker to everybody. My seventh grade year, I remember the, at the time, the principal, Dr. Simpson, came into the classrooms and was pitching this new idea for a new high school. And so some of us kids were skeptical, and some of us kids didn't know what to expect. But me and my mom had actually come to like the opening night of Bassa, and we just really enjoyed it. And I got to meet the principal, and he was super nice. And we were kind of going over classes of what to take. And it was really funny because he looked at me and my mom, and he goes, you look like an athlete. How about you take dance and theater class? And that threw me off guard. It was a curveball for sure. But it really helped me. And the thing about sports, too, is at a traditional high school, it's a lot tougher, I guess, to make teams or to make yourself, you know, stand out. And so coming to Bassa, being a smaller knit school, and I guess relating more to my classmates and teammates, made me enjoy sports a lot more. And I think that's what actually helped my growth, was being so close with everyone else. It really allowed me to just be myself and to succeed in anything I did. I think my favorite memory to start out high school was when I took dance class. I actually met my best friend Andrew Rooton in there. We were the only two guys. And so the teacher was calling roll, and we kind of stared at each other the whole time. We didn't know what to expect. And then we talked to each other, and it, it just clicked for us. And we ended up having third period as well, human geography together, and that was just so much fun. I think some mentors that, that really left an impact was my freshman year and sophomore year coach, Rob Simpson. He just saw something in all of us and my teammates, and he just told us to really stick to it and to never change ourselves, whether it was a sport or the classroom. And so having that like calm example, instead of like a loud coach screaming at you, was just kind of calming to have. My AP US History teacher and geography teacher, Dr. Nicole Baker, she was a great teacher. She was very personable. And she just made the class enjoyable because she also has kids of her own. And so she kind of understood where we were at with her kids being around the same age as us. But she also wanted us to succeed and be the best versions we could. And more recently, my statistics teacher, Jeffrey LaLanne. He actually makes me like math for some reason, which is really weird to say. But he, he's just shown that experience, I think, makes up for everything. But also, you know, being an adult isn't super easy. But it's a lot of fun when you can relate and just have fun and enjoy what you do. Because when you enjoy what you do, it makes life so much better. Right after graduation, I plan on serving a two-year mission for my church. And I'll be called who knows where. And so that'll be really fun. And then when I come back, I've been accepted into the University of Georgia, so I will attend there. And I do plan on playing for the basketball team if the opportunity presents itself. And the goal would to be play college basketball. But if that doesn't work out, I'll go into the broadcasting field or sports media. This year, I received Best Teammate Award in cross country, which I was super grateful for, just because I know how hard it is, especially when you may not be the quickest or, you know, the most loud. But it especially helps just to have that small cheerleader in your corner. And so for my teammates to, I guess, recognize me for that, I think was truly special because hopefully I did the same thing for them. If I could talk to myself as a freshman, I think I would tell myself to never change, just to stay being myself. Obviously, you know, there's a few things, day-to-day basis, that you wish you could change. Or maybe if, oh, I played this sport instead of this sport, maybe stuff like that. But I don't think, looking back on all four years, I don't think I would change anything and just tell myself to have fun.
Hi, my name is Nolé Ródes, and I am a senior at the Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. Well, I heard that it was going to be a new school, and I wanted to see what the possibilities could happen at a new program. And I started to see that I really liked it and that there's a lot more opportunities for you to get better at, at knowing yourself and playing in smaller groups. One of my favorite memories in high school was our spring trip for band. I really liked that I could spend time together with my bandmates and my friends, having fun playing music and having a good time at the park. I think one of the most memorable role models in my high school time has been my teacher, Ms. Hartman, the band teacher. She really pushed me a lot to do things that I was uncomfortable doing, like auditions. And it helped me to learn, to realize that I have a lot to learn and that I am a lot better than I think I was. Yeah, I started band in sixth grade. I started out playing saxophone, and then during eighth grade, I started playing the baritone saxophone, which is slightly larger. And I started playing that ever since. But last year, I began playing tuba and working around a little bit with euphonium and trombone. And now I'm back with alto and barre. My future plans after high school is that I want to study music at Belmont University in Nashville, Tennessee. I heard that it's really good experience over there with commercial music and getting into the music industry, and I really want a taste of that. I think one of the greatest accomplishments was being one of the first classes here in Bassa. Having to start new traditions and like being part of a new school is so different, and it's something that you can only experience once. It's not an experience that most people could have. A piece of advice I'd give myself to a freshman would be to not give up. And also to always pursue what you love, because sometimes there's some things that you love to do, but you are sometimes afraid to do it. But you just have to keep going, and it'll be all good.
This is the Annual Bookbag Drive, where we are able to give a bookbag of school supplies to students who need them in our community, so that way they're set up for success on the first day of school. It's a big community effort where community members and church members and different civic organizations donate supplies and bookbags to make sure that every student in Barrow is taken care of.
My favorite part is just seeing all the different organizations in Barrow County coming together to help out, help out our community. One of the things I really love about being in Barrow County is how much our community does come together and helps everybody out.
I would like to thank, obviously, Bethlehem Church, and then all the other churches in the community that gave backpacks and are making such a big impact in this community.
It means a lot to me because I see a lot of families on a daily basis that's going through some struggles and things. And it just means a lot when we can bear the burden of giving them a bookbag, and they don't have to make a choice between food, bookbag, medicine, stuff like that.
Hey, everyone. My name is Joseph Brown. I'm the Community and Global Missions Pastor here at Bethlehem Church. And we just want to say, this was the biggest year of Bookbag Drive we've ever had in the history of every year that we've done this. It's been absolutely incredible. We gave away over 2,400 bookbags this year, a ton of cars. We shut down Highway 11, potentially even 316. It was awesome. It was crazy. It was a huge turnout. So thank you to all our volunteers, all our sponsors, everybody that participated in today. It was a huge success.
Good morning. I'm Dallas Laduff, Superintendent of the Barrow County School System. And I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who made giving these bookbags away today possible.
My name's Ellen Petrie. I'm the School and Community Relations Specialist for the school system. And I am so very grateful to this incredible community of 30 or 40 businesses, organizations, civic clubs, and individuals that provided over 2,400 bookbags. We are Barrow blessed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Barrow County.
Thank you so much to the supporters who made this event possible. The 2024 Bookbag Drive wouldn't have been possible without the very generous support of more than 30 or 40 churches, businesses, civic clubs, and countless individuals. We were able to share 2,400 bookbags filled with school supplies with Barrow students. We are Barrow blessed. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Colin Hedges, and I'm a senior at Appalachia High School. I've lived in Wynder, well, Bethlehem, all my life. I'm 18 years old. I have my mom and dad. I have two sisters. I've played baseball ever since I was five years old, played football a couple years. I went to Bethlehem Elementary, Hayman Morris, which is right up the hill. And then I've been at Appalachia all four years. You know, it was just a sport that I feel like everyone kind of jumps into at a young age. Played T-ball, and then eventually I got into travel ball. And then, you know, travel ball makes you want to play high school ball. And I played high school here at Appalachia all four years. Through baseball and the classroom, it helps me stay humble. Baseball kind of keeps me on task, pay attention. You have to get good grades in order to play baseball. And really, the number one thing is to just stay humble through it all. I have a couple teachers in mind. One is Coach Hooper. He teaches, well, he taught me US History. He just taught me to, you know, stay chill through it all. He's respectful. He's kind. He's honest, and I really enjoyed his class. And another guy is our head coach, Coach Kyle Bailey. And he's another guy. He just gives it 100% effort in everything he does, and I really admire that. I have a few accomplishments. One, well, we made the Final Four in 2022, which was my sophomore year. I was first-team All-Region my junior year, so 2023. And then another one, I mean, not many people can say they're an honor grad. I'm an honor grad. I think I have a 3.9 GPA. I'm pretty proud of that. I'm planning on attending a tech school near here, so Winnette Tech, Athens Tech, maybe Lanier Tech. I plan on getting a construction management degree. I want to own my own remodeling business when I'm older. One piece of advice I'd give myself as a freshman is to just, you know, be chill. Be, again, be humble, be respectful to all teachers and all your peers. And to go into high school kind of patient. It's not what a lot of people make it sound like. It's actually just, again, pretty chill for the most part. Teachers are respectful to you if you're respectful to them, and yeah.
Ready for the first day of school? How about you? Please remember that we are all in this together, and it helps to bring your patience the first few weeks of school, especially in the car rider line. As our schools and staff and students are getting used to new traffic patterns and bus routes, and as we make the needed adjustments over the first few weeks to those bus routes, things may take a little longer. You can find all of our back-to-school information, or as we like to say, back-to-bold information, on our website. We're wishing you a great first day and an amazing year of success in Barrow County Schools.
My name is Bree Ryle, and I'm a senior at Wynderboro High School. The short version of my childhood from where I am today is that I grew up playing sports all my life until about a year ago. And I played softball until I was about 13, and I quit and played volleyball up until now. And sports have just been a really big impact in my life. And I've grown up around my family, with a tight, close family. And volleyball shaped my character in the classroom by helping me never give up on the work that I struggle to complete. And it's helped me be devoted in the classroom and just pay attention and be respectful. A teacher that has made a lasting impression on me would be my first and fifth grade teacher, Ms. Hannah. She is just the strongest woman that I know, and she loves what she does, and I still keep in contact with her to this day. My accomplishment that I'm most proud of would probably be making it to the Final Four in volleyball last year and making school history. I also am really proud that I am able to graduate high school as an honor graduate, and I've been accepted into several colleges. I plan on going to the University of West Georgia and getting my bachelor's degree in business management. After graduating college, I plan to own my own boutique, just wherever the road takes me. The one piece of advice I would give myself as a freshman is to never take anything for granted, and time flies, so enjoy it while you can.